Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty.
Okay, first thing then is to approve the agenda. Dave, I think you asked if we could move item number two towards the end?
Yes, there's actually another individual that had called me probably two weeks ago, asking to be considered for the vacant council seat. And he's had to go to, Jim Morris has to go to Michigan over the weekend. He's on his way back, but he can't make it by seven o'clock. So we asked if we could defer that part of the agenda until possibly around eight. So I'd like to just move item number two down to probably somewhere after what now is 11, 10 or 11, somewhere in there.
Okay. Any other comments regarding that?
Eric can do that.
Okay. Okay, so I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the stipulation that number two will be moved until Jim Morris can arrive and then we can address that issue. I got a motion?
Second.
Second by Mark Bartusik. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. Well, the first thing on the agenda, as everyone may well aware that at the last meeting, towards the end of the meeting, Pat Scripture did put in her formal resignation to her spot on the city council. It kind of caught us all off guard. So tonight, I guess I would like to officially recognize Pat. So Pat, if you'd come up here, please. Pat, what I'm going to be giving you is a key to the city. It really doesn't work for anything, but I'm just saying. But just stating and thanking you for your recognition for your two years of exceptional work and loyalty as a member of the city council. Now, it doesn't bring anything involved in all those years you worked as a city employee. But on behalf of the city, I want to thank you for your hard work. Your heart was really in it, your passion, and we're going to miss you. But we also want to wish you well in your next endeavor. So, Pat, congratulations.
You were her nameplate?
I need that. Well, I said everything at the last meeting, so, but it's been an honor.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're moving on to number three, which is acceptance of the 2014 audit financial. Kyle?
Mayor, for the benefit of our listening audience at home, we have with us tonight Kyle Myers from the Abdo Eichen Myers Accounting Firm out of Mankato. The council spent an hour in special, nearly an hour in special session from six to 6:45 PM going through the audit with the auditor. And so we do a brief presentation as part of the regular agenda.
Thank you, Mike and Mayor, council, citizens. I'm here tonight to present the summary results of the 2014 audit. Gone over some stuff, things in detail before the meeting here. First of all, I want to express that our opinion is an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. It's the best that an auditor can get as a result of an audit. Some of the financial results that we went over, just again, this is just brief. City's total net position increased by about $600,000 compared to a decrease in the previous year. Increased capital and operating grants and contributions of about $950,000 increase over the prior year were the main factor in that turnaround for the city as a whole. The general funds fund balance increased by about $148,000. Year-end unassigned balances at about 53% of the 2015 expenditure budget. As noted here, the recommended percentage by the Office of the State Auditor and League of Minnesota Cities is anywhere between 35 and 50%, and the city has been within that range or above that range over the last five years. So good, healthy general fund fund balance. We reviewed most all of the other city funds and they have positive fund balances for the most part. Your debt service requirements are fairly level through 2021 at approximately $1.5 million. So again, if you're looking at, you know, increasing your debt load at some point and trying to keep your debt load level, somewhere in the late, the next five, four, five years, you're looking at maybe an increase in your debt if you want to keep that debt load at the same $1.5 million level. Most all of your enterprise funds currently have sufficient cash flows and to fund your operating costs and debt service payments and cash, healthy cash reserves to pay three months of operating costs, which would be a pretty good cash flow balance and one year of debt service payments. So overall, if you look at the city, you know, just from their governmental funds to the enterprise funds, operating fairly well, having good, healthy cash reserves. And that's pretty much my summary of the financial position of the city and the results of the audit. Again, I want to thank the city for their, the opportunity to serve the city of New Prague and the city staff for their continued improvement and assistance during the audit process. It's been great to work with their city staff. So again, thanks.
No, Mike did mention that we did kind of go over in a little bit more detail at six o'clock. The council did review the audits with the auditor, so most of our questions were answered beforehand. So I just don't want people to think that we just do a quick blessing of the audit standards. But I want to thank Kyle and his company for, again, for another good job on the audit. And Patty and Mike for the improvements we see in the audit every year. This is, you know, I'm starting my fifth year, so my fourth time through this process. And as most people may be aware that, you know, I do this for a living. So to see the improvements in the financial statements is very positive in my, in my role as the mayor, but also as someone who is an accountant by trade. So thank you all for a great job. With that in mind, I guess I will make a motion to approve the financial, 2014 financial audit report.
Second.
Yeah, I got a second by Amy Jerk. What I have to leave, the only lady on the council right now. So any other questions or comments? Patty, we're not done yet. Don't put your coat on and start running out yet. So I got a motion by myself, second by Amy Jerk. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Thank you again, Kyle.
Thanks.
Okay. Ken, I think you're taking this, you're going to kind of do a little introduction before we do the public hearing?
I will do a little, little short one here. Ken, pull the microphone down a bit if you would. All right, just to give a little background, as a city council member, we had actually called for the public hearing for this vacation of School Street back at the April 20th council meeting. And the reason was we received a petition from St. Wenceslas for the petition of the area vindicated on the overhead in red there. And basically, it's just west of the, or excuse me, just east of the alley, 10 feet east of the alley for that remainder of School Street, which is going to be reconstructed and become part of the parking lot for the St. Wenceslas Church and School. Council had previously issued a variance for the parking lot, and this is really the last piece of the puzzle before they can formally move forward with the reconstruction of the parking lot. We do require with these vacations that we notify affected property owners and utility companies. We did receive one, actually a couple of letters from Centerpoint Energy. And I'm going to go to their slide here. They show, and if you look on the overhead, the yellow lines are abandoned gas lines, which actually ran all the way through School Street and then up the, what we recently discovered was private church avenue, church street. And the only active line is the area shown in pink there. So they initially objected to the vacation. Talked to them, talked to city attorney Scott Riggs, determined that they would be acceptable to a easement over the northern 10 feet of the vacated School Street. And we have modified the ordinance, which is included with your packet and which was introduced back on the April 20th meeting, basically saying that the right of way will be vacated subject to a gas line easement being retained over the north 10 feet of the vacated area. And the church had no objections to that. Obviously, the line is there to service their property. And that is the only comment we had from any other public utility. So we can open it up for the public hearing. Let's see if we have any questions prior to that.
Okay. If anyone would like to make a statement on, in regards to this ordinance of vacating portion of some street, please come up and, to the microphone next to Ken there and make any statements you'd like. Okay, I guess there is no public comment, so I guess I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mark Bartusik. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Does anyone have any questions for Ken in regards to this? The only question I have is, we did the first reading, last meeting, correct? Was this a change in that reading?
Not substantial enough to require another first reading.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering if we had to make a new, it's not, okay.
Nope.
You knew my question.
We're in good shape, yeah. I went over that with Scott specifically.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the ordinance, vacating portion of streets, or School Street.
So move.
I got a motion by Dave Brusich.
Second.
Second by Mark Bartusik. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. It's passed four, nothing, four zero. Thank you, Ken. Are you doing the next one also?
I'm going to be here for a little while.
Glenn, you want to get him some water or something? It sounds like he's going to, just, he's kind of setting himself in there for a while.
All right, we have another ordinance here to consider tonight for the rezoning of some property up in Heritage Estates subdivision number 11, if you recall. This was introduced to the council on May 4th. Planning Commission had held a public hearing at their meeting on April 22nd regarding the rezoning, which is basically portions of 17 different properties in the Heritage Estates development that were zoned high density residential. And they had been and were intended to develop for single-family lots. Nothing actually wrong with the zoning to be high-density residential and have single-family homes on them, but there is a potential that somebody could have bought a few lots, combined them up, and potentially put an apartment building up there, which this was never intended to be. The comprehensive plan amendments that we wrapped up earlier this year finally allowed the rezoning of this particular area to move forward. And as I said, we did not have any public comments at the public hearing at the Planning Commission on April 22nd. So we did introduce, or the council did introduce the ordinance on May 4th. And I'm simply looking for adoption of the rezoning ordinance at tonight's meeting for these, portions of these 17 properties in Heritage Estates number 11.
Yeah, so now the comprehensive plan does match with all?
Will match.
It will match, okay.
We've got a lot of other areas to fix, but this is one, one down.
Okay. Any questions for Ken regarding this?
Yeah, I have one. I assume that Whit Construction had no issues with this and...
They had no objection whatsoever. No, I did talk to Jason Whit prior to the public hearing.
Okay. Anything else?
I think so.
Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning ordinance on these properties.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich. Any other further comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes four, zero. Here's your third shot, Ken. Shouldn't let Patty go, because she could help you with that.
All right, got the map up there on the overhead there. All right. As the city council is aware, and I had given a brief update shortly after at the April 20th meeting about the city's purchase of the industrial park, future industrial park land just north of Sixth Street, which you see on the overhead there, purchased that property back on April 14th. It's a 23.52 acre parcel. This was purchased from Randy Kowish, and as I noted, for the purpose of it developing into the future phase of the city's industrial park. As I indicated back on that April 20th meeting, we had scheduled to appear at the Helena Township Board Meeting on May 7th. And Mike Johnson and I did meet with them at their board meeting that night. And what we were looking for is consideration of, and you can see it attached in your packet, is a joint resolution for orderly annexation of this property. And to get a little further background, the city has a joint orderly annexation agreement with Helena Township. It designates a certain area around the city that as long as we jointly have a resolution executed by the township board and the council, that we can annex property into the city, which is actually a nice situation versus what we have with Lanesburg Township on the south side, where we have to annex by ordinance, which is kind of a more lengthy process and has to go through the ordinance adoption process. So anyway, we did meet with them at that meeting and they did unanimously approve and executed the joint resolution that night. You can see their signatures on the agreement or the resolution in your packet. So what we are looking for to get this filed at the state is your concurrence and approval of the resolution. And once it is executed, I will file it with the Municipal Boundary Adjustments Office. We have a $47.04 filing fee, and it should be completed in no more than one month. Basically, the administrative law judge needs to review and sign off on it and shouldn't have any issues since we're in joint agreement on the annexation, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I'll put up a map real quickly for the people watching on TV. The concept sketch of the industrial park is shown there, approximately nine lots is what we'll get out of the property. And we'll be working on the plating through the summer.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, if not, I guess I'm going to make a motion to approve the joint resolution with Helena Township and...
Second.
I got a second by Amy Jerk. We're going to do this by roll call. So councilperson Jerk?
Aye.
Councilperson Brusich?
Aye.
Councilperson Bartusik?
Aye.
Mayor Nicolai, aye? And then we got a vacant, so passes four, zero unanimously. Thank you.
We have in the audience Deanne Crowit from the clerk from the township board, and we appreciate all her assistance in the process.
Yes. It's nice to have a nice relationship with you guys. Appreciate it. Okay, Ken, you're not doing this one? Didn't Jeremy call you up and see if you wanted to cover?
I'm going to handle it.
You're going to handle it?
Yeah, I just found out that Fire Chief's on a fire call, so he will not be in attendance. So what we have tonight is a recommendation from Fire Chief Tokowski and members of the fire department to look at making four appointments tonight to fill four vacancies. That as you can see in the memo from Fire Chief Tokowski, that firefighters, former Fire Chief Jerry Novak, Mike Rajitska have retired. And then we also received the resignations of Jake Palmstein and Craig Novotny from the department. They interviewed 15 applicants and are recommending the four individuals to include Eric Hoffman, Christopher Schneible, Brian C. Toopie, and Brian M. Toopie.
Couldn't find two other Brian Toopies in town?
I asked them the same question. I said, you know how difficult this is going to be? And it was trying to schedule some of the things we had to do that somewhat complicated. But they've passed their background tests, the driving and criminal background checks, employment physicals, and drug and alcohol tests. So they are recommending the, these four individuals be added to the fire department effective tomorrow, May 19th.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I was going to make a snide remark, but since Jeremy's not here, I'm not going to say anything.
Save it for next time you see him.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, if no other comment, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the appointed, the four appointed new firemen?
I'll second it.
Second by Dave Brusich. There's any further comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, we have four new firemen. We are very fortunate that we have people who are willing to take on these, this role because it is quite a time commitment nowadays with all the training they have to go through, so. So I'm sure now that these new firemen will be sworn in at the next meeting or so, that they will be giving nicknames to the two Bryans so that they can definitely have them ferret out between them, so.
We talked about the two B one and two B two, but it sounds like we also have another two B on, so there's maybe two B one, two and three.
Oh, yeah. Isn't Paul Toopie on there too? Yeah, it'd be, yeah, it'd be, no, yeah, that's not a good thing, so. Okay, next, we have the baseball committee here to...
Ken, can you pull up their page if you wouldn't mind? We have with us tonight Brian Jirdy, the engineer from INS, who's been of great assistance to the committee. And if I don't make any mistakes, we have with us tonight Jerry Plombeck, Nick Sheniker, right? And Mike Shteeka, yeah, Jerry Plombeck, Mike Shteeka, and Nick Sheniker. Three of the members of committee, as well as council member Brusich, Glenn Shteeka, and myself. So we do have some representation. But we've asked Brian to come in and go through kind of an overview of the proposed improvements for Phase One here in 2015. And we've got a couple of different overhead maps that we'll walk you through and what's included, and the schedule for bidding, and what have you. And then we'll allow then, Mike Shteeka can say a few words on behalf of the committee as well. So Brian, if you and/or Mike want to come up to the front counter here and...
Thanks, Mike. Mayor and council, thanks for having us tonight. So since we were last here kind of discussing what all was involved in the projects and the planning process, we proceeded down to kind of the detailed planning of the improvements for 2015. Kind of just generalizing, the, those improvements for this year include the concession stand and restroom building, the construction of the plaza area, which is mainly a paved area in and around the restroom and concession building, and closing the backside and sides of the grandstand, new batting cages, and then just some miscellaneous site improvements to clean up the area in and around the bleachers as well as the new concession building. You know, one of those things, again, as we've kind of gone through the process, right on the northwest corner of the baseball site is transformer and and some electrical control panels. We'll be screening those and incorporating a dumpster enclosure into that area as well to kind of clean it up and make it consistent with other properties within the city that are required to screen the dumpsters, keeping it away from the fans and just in cleaning up the area in general. Let's see. So what I've, what we've got up here on the screen is kind of the final overall layout of what the facility will look like after the three years' worth of improvements are complete. And again, all this will, and will include the new bullpens, a check deck, the new fencing, and new backstop, which will create a larger area for spectators between the field and the bleachers. New press box above the home dugout. In this right field side, we've got the new batting cages going adjacent to the golf cart storage shed. And then on the backside of that, the, is where the bullpens will be. If we go to the next slide, oops. Apologize for Windows 8.
Oh, yeah.
Ken, come save the day.
Use the, use the old Windows 8 excuse again.
Yeah, there's separate ones. Okay, there you go. So this concept was updated, just showing the improvements that'll be done here for, for just 2015. You know, a lot of our time and effort in the last few meetings have been related to find the fine, the fine points of what we're putting in, where things go, and very carefully trying to plan the work that we do this year so that we don't inhibit or have to cause rework in subsequent years. So it's everything from conduit below, where we're going to put new hard surfacing in the building so that when we replace the irrigation on the field, we don't have to disrupt the new concrete, making sure those utilities are stubbed into the new restroom and concession building, all of those type of things. So in essence, we're here tonight to request, per my memo, that plans and specs are all ready to go out for bid. I did talk to Mike this afternoon. The estimates have all been updated from the work we did months ago to kind of help budget the thing. And now that we've defined things for 2015, we're, we're right on track and actually a little bit below what our projected budget would be with our, our current estimate. So we're comfortable that the scope of work that's been developed and refined as we've gone along is consistent with the budget and...
Brian, what is the dollar amount on the first phase again, if you have that handy?
The budget amount was $356,250 for the 2015 improvements. And really, the only work not included in the bid package right now we're working on separately is just the work on the scoreboard, because that's kind of proprietary to some vendors, so. And the dollar amount's under $100,000, so we can negotiate and get competitive quotes on that work. So that'll be done outside of this bid package.
Well, we've also got one more slide on, shows the, the building per se with the concession stand and the... with the concession stand and the restroom.
Yep, there you go. What we've got here is just, the first drawing is showing what the, the floor plan of the building ended up as. So we've got our concessions area, a back storage room with three compartments sink, which is required by the Department of Health, an area for a future cooler. We've got a couple, some lights, and the cooler identified as add alternate things for the bid that depending on if the bids come in favorably, we'd have the ability to add some of these amenities in should the budget support it. And then the other side of the, the building itself, we've got the men's and women's restroom along with a utility room and ticket booth. Got some colored elevations here. The, the structure itself will be all masonry construction along with a shingled roof. That's about it. Is there anything I missed?
No, the concept for the building is very similar to what you see up at the high school. So if it looks the same, that's the reason that it does. We would advertise this with bids coming in June sixteenth.
Correct, yes.
At two PM, and it would come to council at the first meeting in July for bid award and starting construction on or about August tenth, depending on how long the Orioles baseball season goes. Mike, anything from the committee that you wanna provide to the council as part of this?
It's been a great process thus far. I mean, everyone's been involved and at the meetings and very tactical and looking at all these different plans and ideas and going through different iterations of it and just trying to get the best possible design that we can that, that suits all parties using the field. So it's been a great process in the city, and the baseball guys and Brian have been awesome thus far. So we have the confidence that we've done all those iterations and we've gotten the right design for this, and I think we're excited to get it started come August and get these bids out soon. And from the baseball perspective, we're churning our wheels as well. We have a donations group that we've formed. We also have a scoreboard group that we've formed to get those pieces in place. The scoreboard will be finalized in 2015, as Brian mentioned, and we're working to get that committee in place to seek advertisers for that and the different pricing for that. And the donations group is trying to finalize how we'll go out to the public and seek donations in the future. So more to come on that later this summer, but we're all kinda getting our ducks in a row, if you will, and excited to get started here.
Yeah, any questions? These improvements you're talking about, 215, they should all be able to be finished within this year?
Correct. The anticipated construction schedule is, again, starting April tenth or seventeen, or August, sorry, August tenth at the earliest, otherwise a hard start date of August seventeenth, with completion scheduled mid-November for substantial completion. And then allowing a few till about mid-April in the spring, just for cleanup and getting it ready for the, the 2016 baseball season.
Any questions, comments? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution of the plans, and Gwynn, oh, for bid?
Uh, so move.
Second.
We got a motion by Dave Bruszek, second by Mark Bartuszek. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes four to zero. Thank you, guys, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, I guess, since Jim has arrived, we are going to go to item number two, 'cause we stated it as in our agenda that we would move the item number two to when Jim arrives. So he is here now. So as we mentioned earlier, and with Pat's recognition on item number one, we have a vacancy in one, remaining time on her council seat, which is what, two thousand?
December of 2016.
Twenty sixteen.
And for those in the, out in the viewing audience, that the council, as you consider your options tonight, because there's less than two years left on this four-year term, you have the right to appoint and to go through whatever selection process you choose to fill this vacancy.
Right, okay. So, you know, I know, go ahead.
Yeah, I had gotten a call from Jim Morris about two weeks ago now, I think, and Jim expressed interest also. And there's two individuals that have expressed interest, Sean Ryan and Jim Morris, filling the vacancy of Pat Scripture. I talked to Jim a couple of times by, via phone, and he had some difficulty getting here earlier as he was out in Michigan.
Close.
Close. Door County, yep, that's right. So he was able to make it now. One of the questions I asked of Jim that I know has concerned us is about snowbirds, 'cause I thought, well, Jim probably goes out of the state for a while during winter, and he assured me that, no, that's not the situation. He stays here and he is going to make himself available, if he's selected, for all the meetings and any committee that he might be appointed to. But I would like to ask Jim if he would, I know Jim fairly well. I don't know all the activities he's been in, in this community, but if he wouldn't mind, I'd like him to maybe come up to the podium and just kind of explain everything that he's been involved in with the community.
Yeah, my apologies for being late. I was in Milwaukee, and we ran into a couple of first-class road construction projects. And for those of you who are interested in road construction, you ought to go down to the border and look at that lacrosse bridge that they're putting in there. It's, it's fantastic. Yeah, I expressed my, my interest in, in, in taking Pat's position on the council, because I'm, I'm very interested in the work that the council does. And over the years, I've had a chance to be involved in a number of different things. I was the economic development director for the city for about ten years, I think. It was about ten years. And prior to that, I had been active in the New Prague. There was, there's a New Prague group that, that preceded all of the economic development activity, and I was involved in that for about ten years also. So I've had quite a bit of experience with that. And, and then I served on Economic Development Committee for probably ten years or better. And I served on the golf court, the golf board for, for three terms. And I actually managed the golf course when we lost our, our golf course manager mid-season. I stepped in and managed the golf course for the last half of, of that year and helped recruit and hire a, a new manager to replace myself, if that boils down to. And then I've served two full terms that I was elected to on the school board. And I served two partial terms where people were moving out of the district or, or wanted to resign for one reason or another. And so I served two full terms and two partial terms that were like a year and a half or two each. And I think those are probably the key activities that I've been involved with that relate to the city.
Okay. Any questions for Jim at all?
I have one, I think I asked you already, but are you at all interested in filing for the council position after this interim term?
No, that wasn't my intent. When, when I called about Pat's position, it was strictly to fill her position until the council could go through the normal election process and get a person in here duly elected by the, by the people. And, and it wasn't my intent to, to run.
Okay. Any other questions or anything for Jim? Okay, thank you, Jim. I'm gonna actually call Sean Ryan up to the microphone and kinda give his little resume and his...
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Excuse my voice, I've been fighting a little spring cold here. Well, to Jim's point, he has a lot of service for the community of New Prague. I appreciate that, and, and that's a very valuable asset. I believe that I have almost as much. I did run in the last election, lost a very tight race by ninety votes and two hundred votes out of twenty-eight-hundred cast. I've only been off the council about four months. I'm up to speed on all the major issues. The budget you're working on right now, I was part of, so I'm familiar with all the expenditures and whatnot of the various departments. The ball field, I was active in that. I was on the EDA Board as the council rep and the golf board. So those two major entities of, of city government, I'm up to speed on that. So when Pat, to be honest, it would, it did surprise me that Pat resigned. I know that she valued that job and really liked it and worked hard at it and, and... But considering that I was going to run again in 2016 because it was so tight, I think there was a few issues that maybe cost me the election this year and the fact that there was low voter turnout. My base is probably the fifty and under group. And with the lack of any real competition for the governorship and the senate seat, which we're pretty much assured to Mark Dayton and to Al Franken, I think a lot of people, there wasn't quite the turnout that there, there was. So I think that, that hurt me a little bit in that, that under fifty group. But I did receive twelve hundred and, almost twelve hundred and fifty votes, thirty-one percent, I think, to Dave's thirty-three and to Amy's thirty-five percent, so I had a third of the town behind me. I also think there was something to be said, I'm not the only one, but something to be said about being third on the ballot too, which is a random, when you sign up, just the state kind of randomly puts you on the ballot. But I think a lot of people vote for the first two people when there isn't a contention or a, a major issue with the council. And I don't think there was those last four years that I was on. We seemed to be doing everything right, and the city was doing very well, so. There is a precedent that's set. When Councilmember Flechek left a few years ago, there was, I believe, Ken Betterton at that time was appointed. And then when he resigned, I think they took the last council person that was on, and that was Jim Cradaville, is that correct? So the fact that a position opens up and I did run, it's only been four months. I'm up to speed on pretty much every major issue that has come before you in these last four months. I think I'd be a good candidate to, to fill that spot.
Okay. Any questions for Sean?
Sean, you are running again in 2016, I assume, right?
I planned on it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Relative to what Sean said, he's right. When Ken Betterton resigned, I was called by Bing Bender, mayor at the time, to ask if I wanted to serve it. And I said, "Yeah, I wouldn't mind serving it, but I have to tell you, Bing, I am planning on running in the general election when Ken's term is up," which I did. Because of that, Bing says, "Then I am not going to put your name before the council." I said, "Why?" "Because that might give you preferential votes over someone else." So he chose Jim, who was not going to run in the following subsequent election. So whether it makes a lot, any difference or not, I don't know. But that's, that's kinda why I asked Jim if he was planning on running in 2016, and he said no.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could add for the benefit of the council, there, there are no requirements that you follow as far as the process or the procedure, whether you pick from either one of the two individuals, whether you put it out to accept applications and interview, you have complete discretion on how you go about filling this vacancy. You can choose to do it by appointment tonight in the resolution and appoint somebody at the next meeting. You can appoint somebody tonight, if you can reach agreement, to do that, to put that in the resolution, and that individual could be sworn in. You have complete discretion how you go about that process. If there ultimately ends up, I think, one of the pieces that I noted in my memorandum, just so you have as background, is if for any reason it ends up in a two-to-two tie, then Mayor Nicolai, under both the statute and the city charter, has the right to make the selection. So with that, that's within your hands then to make a decision as to how you proceed. You will have to make a determination in the resolution. We've got it set up in an either-or situation, so you just need to make that determination in the last, be it further resolved, that either you're gonna fill the appointment by appointment of a... You will fill by appointment a successor, and then you name that person at the next meeting, or you choose the language that appoints blank to the position tonight if you choose to take action yet tonight, so. All within your discretion.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm gonna look for opinions from each one of us. Amy?
Well, I'm glad that we have two people willing to step up to fill in the position. I know, I agree with both of them. Sean has the experience, he knows the issues. I like it that Jim was willing to step up and just fill in without preparing to run for election again, 'cause I do feel that would be an unfair advantage. But I also am thinking, to be fair to the citizens, a lot of them maybe don't just have heard about this process. I think we should advertise, and that would maybe, when I was looking at the two weeks' notice, we possibly could have a position filled then, just to see if there's anyone else by June fifteenth. That would be what I would feel would be fair to, if there's anyone else out there that we need to consider, and then make our decision.
Yeah? Mark?
I'm also glad that we have two people willing to fill the position, who are both very qualified. This is my seventh year on the council, and I happen to be here for the last two that resigned their positions. Both times, we appointed somebody. And I guess for me, this time is just as easy of a choice as what it was before, because we just had an election five months ago. There was only three people that's, that were there. And only one of them did not get on, and they were separated by four percentage points. So I think the people spoke five months ago. And it was a close race, so I don't think anybody's gonna be real disappointed. anybody's going to be real disappointed if Sean took the seat again, especially since he just put in four years. And ironically, I believe when Kristin and I got on, and then we appointed Ken to fill, was it Jennifer Flechek? Was that her name, her spot? I think that out of the six people that ran, probably the three of us probably had 75 percent of the votes distributed somehow in that, in that area. So that's the way I feel. I feel the people spoke not very long ago. And if anybody else really wanted to be a city council member at that time, they could have ran.
I'm glad we have two. And I think they're both highly qualified. I guess I'm taking kind of a viewpoint that apparently Bing Bender did. And I think that, I'm pretty sure Sean will win the next time he runs. And I think it gives us an opportunity at this point to pick, to get somebody on the council that probably has a little different slant to things going on in the city than some of us do. And so I would, I don't know if we need to advertise for more people. I think that if we were going to get people that were interested, they would have contacted one of us or Mike and thrown their hat in it. So at this point, I'd like to see Jim get a seat for the next 17 months, knowing that Sean will, in all likelihood, be with us in those, again in 17 months. So that would be the way, I think, right now.
Okay. Okay, again, I agree with everyone that, you know, it's very fortunate that we have two people who want to fill that spot. A lot of things you read and you talk to people is that they have a hard time getting people to fill vacancies on councils. And we've even seen that on some of our boards and commissions, because it is a time commitment to the community. And a lot of it is not well-recognized within the community. Being that said, my opinion is, I look at it as, filling this position, I think I see, that I would see that Sean would fit in, being that he, as went through the budget process, understands the direction that the city is taking, you know, that we took last year during the budget process. Therefore, he would be up to speed in a much faster timeframe. I think, personally, I think Sean did an excellent job when he was on the council. He worked hard at it and was very passionate about it. So again, that's my opinion. I think it just would make an easy transition for the council moving forward. So with that in mind, it looks like we have three, three basic opinions going forward. So Mike, what would you suggest?
I really don't have any more of an opinion, other than what we've tried to identify, is that, number one, you have complete discretion and determination of how you fill the position, whether you pick from the two individuals that happen to have come forward to indicate an interest, whether you advertise or whatnot. There is no conditional requirement. And listening to some of the commentary about whether somebody has an up, a leg up in the next election, is that there's no requirement that, in the statutes, that addresses that, that that would have to be an individual opinion. And so we've tried to put materials together to give you the choices of what you do. And I think we've identified the situation if it ends up in a tie vote from that standpoint. So there's really nothing that either myself or staff can really add, that, you know, this one's a council decision amongst the four of you.
Okay.
I think we should appoint somebody tonight, personally.
Well, I agree. I think I would like to get it, get it over with. Not to say, just to get it over with, but to keep, you know, get the person up to speed and so that we can move forward.
I move we appoint Sean Ryan.
Okay, I'll second that. So I got a motion to approve Sean Ryan's by Mark Bartusik, seconded by myself. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Aye.
I spoke for Jim.
Okay. Well, obviously, it's a two-two tie. And based on state statutes and our charter, I guess I have the dubious duty to appoint the position. And based on that, I'm going to appoint it to Sean Ryan. So with that in mind, Jim, I want to thank you very much for your willingness to step up to the plate. You've done it in the past. And it's by no mean my decision was not a reflection on you personally. It's just, it's something I felt that was the best interest for the city at this time. So thank you. With that in mind, Mike, I think we need to swear Sean in if we can. Sean, do we come up, please? Do you want to do it in front of the TV there, so that TV cameras will be right on you? That way Sean can finally be on TV.
Where's the camera?
Jason, this way, please. She said, this is the direction.
It's a team.
Back by the, by the screen there, yeah. There you go.
Thank you, Rick.
Well, thank you for your consideration. I just got back here, so I'm going to go.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
We'll wait for councilperson Sean Ryan to take his spot.
Safe to have him sit next to you.
Yes. And there's your new spot. Congratulations. Now we're on to item number nine. Resolution establishing limited cleanup. Mike, I think you're taking this on the League of Minnesota?
Correct. This is a matter that with the renewal of the city's insurance package with the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust for coverages beginning April 1st of this year, we were informed by the league that the council would be required to update and approve a modified resolution as it relates to the optional no-fault sewer backup coverage. This is coverage that the city has procured and had an effect since the decision was made by the council back in November of 2003, with the general purpose that it's to provide a limited no-fault sewer coverage that potentially can reimburse property owners for certain cleanup costs and property damage irrespective of whether the city is thought to be legally at fault. For insurance renewals after November 15th of 2009, coverage was also expanded to include no-fault water main break coverage as well with no additional premium. So they added that back in '09, and there was no cost for that additional premium. I tried to get Bruce to pick up part of the cost here, but he wouldn't do that at this point.
Thanks, Bruce.
In order for the, in order for the city to continue to buy this additional endorsement for this coverage, we're required to approve a new resolution because the league has modified the scope of coverage and what is actually covered. And I've included in your packet the information which shows a copy of the current coverage endorsement, subject to the changes outlined in the new resolution. That's in the league memo dated November 13th from this past fall. I also included a copy of the previous insurance delineation that was in our current insurance package that just renewed. Estimated annual cost for this type of coverage is $3,494 annually, and it's based on about $1.30 per sewer connection is how they arrive at that premium cost. Again, there's no additional billing for the water main coverage. Historical total incurred losses after deductibles amounted to just under $12,000, based on three claims that were incurred back in October of 2005. So there hasn't been significant claims under this policy. And so basically, what the league is saying is that if we want to continue to provide this coverage, you have to update the new resolution that has a little tighter breakdown of what the eligibility is in order for the coverage to be applicable. Reviewed this with Chuck Tupi, and as we take a look at it, is that, you know, it's a nominal cost to have the endorsement. However, they are making it a little bit more restrictive going forward. And so we either have to choose to include it or to not include it going forward.
I wonder, Mike, if we've had only $11,720 apparently in claims, does it really pay us to have this kind of coverage?
Well, the challenge is, is that, you know, just because you buy insurance doesn't mean you have to use it. And it's there, and it's a no-fault type of insurance. And if you happen to peruse the materials that was included, you can see the conditions that have to be met in order for the, of course, for the league to actually pay an insurance claim. And when you look at the enclosed resolution that I've included in your packet, because of the fact that they put this into play a number of years ago, and there's been minimal claims up until this last year, that all of the major rains this last year, and I believe, what was it, May or June of this last year, it was gone, but I believe that was about June, they paid out fairly significantly under this provision. And so they had two choices. Either they had to increase the premium cost for people to continue to procure it, or they had to tighten up the conditions of how or when the insurance will actually pay out. And at this point, they've chosen to tighten up the eligibility for that. Probably most significant is under the first part of the resolution on page one, under sanitary sewer backups. Number one is, it must have resulted from a condition in the government unit sanitary sewer lines and not from a condition in a private line. So if somebody had some blockage in their service line from the house to the main, tree roots, whatever that might be, that's not a coverable item. The backup must not have been caused by any catastrophic weather or other event, which has been declared by the president to be a major disaster pursuant to federal law or the law commonly known as the Stafford Act. So in taking a look at it, they got a little bit more restrictive there, that it can't be caused by an interruption in the electric power to our sewer system or to any lift station which continues for more than 72 hours. Again, a little bit more restrictive. Bigger piece had to do with the backup, may not have been caused by an amount of precipitation equivalent to a rainfall from anywhere from two to five and a half inches within the hour time limits that are there. So again, those were changes that were made to kind of curtail the eligibility for claiming that. So to try to tell you exactly what has to occur, I can only tell you that, you know, if it's a claim that doesn't comply with any of those things, then it would be eligible. It's up to, I believe, it's $10,000. You can buy higher limits at either 25 or 40. But in looking at the history and the payout and the usage, it didn't seem appropriate to recommend to you to increase it to higher levels. And so all I can do is to tell you that, you know, for the price of just under $3,500, it's a relatively minimal cost for us to have the endorsement, should somebody not, or should they encounter a situation where it would be applicable. I guess the other one that I didn't mention that really is key is that if they have their own insurance, that's the primary coverage and not the city's. So it's not made to take the place of an individual's own property, owner's insurance or other property insurance under the, under the program. So...
Yeah. So did we have any claims last year with all the rain?
No, we did not.
Okay. I didn't think so, because it was only in 2005.
When I checked the claims history, as I indicated in my opening comments, the only time that we've had an occurrence that got paid out under this coverage since the council chose back in 2003 to do this was one event that three individuals filed claims on in October of 2005. So that's been the only time that we've had that come into play.
Dave, one nice, one thing it does do for us also, and Glenn and I were talking a little bit about it, is it kind of alleviates the pressure on staff to have to make decisions on whether or not the city is liable. We're able to turn that over to the insurance companies, and they mitigate it between themselves, the homeowner's insurance and their insurance, or the league's insurance. And so it somewhat helps
Okay.
take the pressure off the city for having to make those decisions. And it's worked out pretty well in the, in the past.
And the other piece, I don't know if you recall the situation a couple of years ago with a major water main break in downtown Minneapolis. I don't think I've ever heard the end result as to whether it was a contractor, contractor caused, or whether it was just a simple breakage in about a 48-inch water main in downtown Minneapolis, is that when that line broke, is it filled
Big flood.
the basement of a parking garage and some of the other adjacent businesses and that. And in some cases, some might not provide or have that type of coverage for flooding purposes or what have you. So as an additional benefit, besides just looking at this from a sanitary sewer standpoint, it also does cover four water main breaks as well. And in talking to our insurance agent Chuck Tupi, is that, you know, different than most households is let's just take a look at the downtown business community, that in some cases, people have basements in their businesses, and we've got a water line running down the middle of Main Street, that some of them do not insure their basements. In some cases, it's intentional, because they just choose not to pay the added premium and, you know, provide for that benefit. Or they just don't store anything of any significant value in there, knowing that it is wet and what have you. So other than that kind of summary, you know, I don't know that there's any more that I can add to you to encourage you to, you know, to take action on, other than I would identify and concur with Bruce and Glenn's comments, is that if it does come, it's viewed to see if it is eligible for insurance. And if it's not, the insurance company's made the determination and that we don't have to get into the middle of that decision-making process.
What is our deductible?
$2,500.
$2,500.
I would just say, Dave, I figured out, it's less than one one-hundredth of a percent of our general fund budget in a year or two, so...
Well, I know it's not, it's a small pittance, but I was just curious.
Just to save those two guys from our, I agree with you, though. I don't know if it's worth it either, but...
Well, yeah, until Bruce mentioned that, I hadn't thought of that idea, or that event. But I would agree that it could save you guys a lot of time.
Well, the other thing that we talked about quite a bit was the fact that, you know, if you do have a blockage in a sewer main, look at most of the blocks in town here, and you got houses on each side of that one block, it sometimes wouldn't take very long for that main to fill up and start backing up into ten houses. And we've been fortunate, and because we got a clean program.
Okay.
Because we did that.
But that's the concept of insurance, to protect you from the big, the big catastrophic, you know, loss, so...
I move we approve it.
Second. Got a motion by Mark Bartusik, seconded by Amy Jurick. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Thanks, Mike. Mike, are you taking the next one?
Yes.
Okay.
You should have a revised, updated memo. You should have a revised, updated memo in front of you tonight that is modifying the previous one we'd included in the packet. That what you have in front of you is the summary following the end of the year for the two thousand fourteen GME, the Gulf Management Enterprises contract pertaining to the incentive provision that you have in there and that has been in their contract since two thousand and eleven. City has paid out in two thousand and twelve out of the timeframe eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen so far. And the requirement is the, at least what was contained in the agreement that you approved in January of two thousand and fourteen, for the two thousand and fourteen year was a requirement that the end result, that the revenues and the calculation that we're going to walk you through, number one, has to be a positive number, but secondly, that it has to be greater than the previous year's audited net operating income. And what that is, is that operating revenues minus operating expenditures, adding back depreciation, has to be a positive number, as I stated, and it has to be greater than the previous year's audited net operating income plus depreciation. If you look in the back of the memo and using the new one that we provided tonight, is to take a look at, and the reason for the change is that it was brought to our attention earlier that there was a slight difference between what I had provided and what was in the audit and in checking with Finance Director Sol Hyde, there'd been a slight disagreement between her and the auditor over how to calculate a PRA refund and whether that should reduce the PRA expenditures or whether it's considered non-operating income and is considered below the line of operating revenues minus expenditures. And it was a small dollar amount amounting to all of eleven hundred and, let's see, was it?
One thousand one hundred and ninety-three.
Yeah, let me see if I can. One thousand one hundred and ninety-four is what's in the fourteen audit. And so that by the inclusion of whether that was considered part of the operating revenue or whether it is down under the other non-operating revenue, had a slight bearing on the differential of what the expenditures were in the first calculations that were initially developed. So we went back and modified that based on discussions with the auditor. And so you've got operating revenues of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, which is an increase of a little over forty-nine, thirty-nine thousand dollars or six point two percent from thirteen to fourteen. Secondly, the operating revenues of six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, less operating expenses of seven thirty-seven, provides for a net operating loss of a little over fifty-eight thousand dollars. But when you add back in depreciation, which is a non-cash expense, you end up with a positive outcome of fifty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars for two thousand and fourteen. If we multiply that by fifteen percent, which is the category that it falls into, they would be entitled to a payment of seven thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-five cents for two thousand and fourteen operations.
Can you explain about the change next year to, you mentioned to me?
Well, no, that change occurred in the two thousand and fourteen
Oh, okay, so that is, okay.
Compared to previously.
Okay.
So that already reflects that the contract for fifteen, sixteen is the same as the fourteen language.
Okay.
And basically, and the other one is that the difference was prior to two thousand and fourteen is that the triggering event is that revenues had to be greater than the prior year and then the same formula, operating revenues minus expenditures, adding back depreciation also had to be positive. And in this case, it's just simply that the number from this calculation has to be a positive number. And the piece that you have is that in two thousand and thirteen, that number ended up being a negative number. And so, as you take a look at that, it was operating negative of forty-six thousand two forty-nine and this year in two thousand and fourteen, it's a positive thirty-nine four oh nine, so.
Okay.
And the current one goes till two thousand and sixteen when we?
The fifteen, sixteen contract includes the same language that you're seeing here tonight and fourteen is the same language that's there.
But she, I think she's asking if the contract is for fifteen and sixteen.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry. But the piece about it next year is that, again, the calculation has to be positive, but next year in two thousand and fifteen is that number has to be greater than the previous year's audited number as well. So it will have to be greater than what you're seeing at here at the, excuse me, I said thirty-nine before, it wasn't fourteen, but it's fifty-two seven fifty-nine. So for next year, that number has to be positive and next year's number will have to be larger than the fifty-two seven.
Right.
So that's moving them in a direction that they continue to perform well in that part of the process.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other questions? Not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the incentive provision for GME contract.
Second.
Second by Dave Bruchek. If there's no further comment, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay. And it sounds like they're starting off this year with a bang, from what I've seen so far, so, which is good. Always been our goal to get that thing self-sufficient and.
Take a beating this week.
Yeah, not a lot of golfers today. Okay, next, Ken, are you taking this one?
I'll take this.
What?
I have my water and everything.
You want to go to the front?
You got enough?
I got no pictures. When we started the two thousand and fifteen CIP project, we knew of a property on Fifth Avenue Northwest where the water and sewer lines crossed the neighboring property at three oh seven. So when we talked to the property owners and told them the situation, which they weren't aware of, then they petitioned the city to have, under the contract, a new sewer and water put into their property on their property or at a ninety-degree angle to the mains, going straight into their property, going up as far as we needed to go to connect to the existing sewer lines. And there is a map attached in the package showing the existing lines. They run at a pretty good angle, so we'll be going back into the property quite a ways, but it's all at their expense. It's just going to be put on as part of the contract and then the payment spread out over fifteen years. The benefit to the city, which we can do that, as long as there is a benefit to the city, is the fact that if they ever sell that property or do anything and the buyers say, well, until you move those sewer and water lines, I'm not touching this, they're not going to be cutting into our brand new road. So that's how we incorporate this kind of project. Nothing different than what we did last year with the two properties on the end of Third Street Northwest because of sewer lines and moving the private to different areas and things like that. So, staff recommendation is that you enter an agreement with the owners at three oh nine, Fifth Avenue Northwest, to get their water and sewer put onto their property and off the neighbor's property.
Will it just increase their assessment?
Pardon me?
Will it just increase their assessment?
That's exactly right. Because in that area, we weren't replacing sewer lines, so basically they're paying for a sewer line and a lot of the other property owners aren't.
How much is that going to be, do you know?
It was three to...
Three thousand nine hundred.
Sewer and water, right?
Thirty-five eighty-five total for both services.
Okay, yep, there it is, okay.
But all the curb and gutters getting tore out anyway, so they just got to dig through it?
No, not all the curb and gutter was. It will in this situation because of going through there. The curb would have been pulled out because of the new water service, because on that street on Fifth Avenue, we are putting in a new water main. And at that point, they are also putting in new water services into every property. So, where that existing water service is, or in this case, where it's supposed to be, that curb would have got pulled out anyway. So because of the sewer line, the curb was gone anyway. Because of the water line, I'm sorry, not because of the sewer. So, by adding the sewer or moving the sewer is not going to cause, that's not going to increase the cost, being a curb or sod replacement, things like that.
So then, once we do that change, that just gets left there vacant?
It will be capped.
Just capped on both ends?
Yep, it will be capped. And that's one spot on the sewer main and Fifth Avenue because of the two services being so close and we're assuming the way they were installed, but we don't really know that. But they're not collapsed, but they're kind of oblong where we can't even get a camera through. So it was going to be a repair in that spot anyway. Well, then we'll be able to get rid of the second sewer Y, so that'd be eliminated in that spot, put in a new one like we planned on doing for three oh seven and just putting in a new one in front of three oh nine where it's supposed to be. And then the sewer line, like I said, in the properties will be capped where it's connected to the new one. The old one will be capped so that it can't fill with dirt or take infiltration or anything else, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any idea why it was ever done like that?
Early assumption is because both those buildings were put up about the same time.
Oh.
And, no, we don't, we looked long and hard for any kind of documentation, we really couldn't find anything. Anything we're saying at this point is just an assumption. I think it's pretty safe, but we got no concrete evidence why.
Okay.
We've seen it before and we try to correct them when we go through and do these projects, is make the property owner aware of it. Lot of them don't even know that.
Generally, they never had any repairs, they'd have no reason to, no.
Exactly right, exactly right. Why would you, why would you know, why would you really care if it's working?
Right.
It's all, it's important.
Generally wouldn't be allowed now to be done that way in the first place and so we're not certain whether that was necessarily originally approved or not or how it got done. And, you know, the problem is, is that we don't know and can't absolutely say, but it's always safer to have individual water and sewer lines to respective properties on somebody's property so that you don't end up getting into a situation that you have fingers pointing and trying to determine who's at fault or responsible if there's a problem that needs to be repaired.
Yeah.
So it's just a safe cleanup as long as we're in the neighborhood with the project for the summer.
No, I think it's good being good stewards.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mark Bartusik to approve the engineer recommendation to enter in this agreement.
Second.
Second by Amy Jurk. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Ken, you're going to introduce?
Dennis in the direction.
Dennis, Dennis, I firstly like to say thank you for your patience, I'm sure.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... a Ken, and the state did not want it designated as the historic district, although it is. They wanted me to, to identify it as the downtown district. So that's what I focused on. So in the process, I did 89 buildings. I went off Main Street and did the cemetery chapel of St. Wenceslas Parish, because it hadn't been done before, in the process of national register recognition. I recognized five structures in the city of New Prague to be placed on the national register. That's a process that is not conducted by me, but only by recommendation based on what I have observed and my ability to identify structures that have retained their architectural integrity and are in good condition. We do have a situation in New Prague where we have many more historic buildings, however, they do not have their architectural integrity intact, and their condition is questionable. So, to, things that I, do you have the... Yeah, I want to tell you what I did. So identifying each building, I had to identify the present owner, the historic owner of the building, or the business that was conducted there. In the process, I had to talk, comment on its architectural integrity, meaning is it as close to what it looked as when it was constructed? And then its condition, well, the condition is pretty questionable, because part of the project was not to go into the bowels of the building, but to basically look at its exterior and give the first impression. I also had to identify the PIN number, and what did I miss on that first? I shouldn't have missed any, because I've done, I guess, everything. So identifying the owner was one, one interesting process, and, and it taught me a lot about history, because when I began this project, some of the buildings and the owners of the buildings have changed. Well, Caroline Amplatz, she deserted the hotel project, and some of the businesses now are vacant, they're up for rent, and some of the businesses are up for sale. So that's history in the process, the process of history, that is. After I did the initial comments in the survey, then I went to and tried to research the history, which in the survey, there are resources that I used. And again, I want to mention the New Prague Times and the publications from the earliest times that recorded the history. So as a historian, you use the tool, the information, there's no new information, you just have to rediscover it. I also relied on oral history. When I started the bicentennial celebration, when we were designated a bicentennial city in, in 1974, I, I was the bicentennial chairman and came in contact with some great people in this community. One was Dave's parents, Benny and Hilda Bruszek, as an example, who were great storytellers. And so I relied on the storytellers as part of this survey, because their unrecorded history is absolutely essential and part of our tradition. So I measured each building, I identified the plan type, the number of stories, what type of foundation. Now, in some cases, I relied on the owners of the building to tell me. In one case, I was almost hung out and tarred and feathered by asking it, but then so were you, you were on the shit list too, pardon the expression. After I identified the roof type and the materials, I had to proceed to identify whether was it a chimney, and then discuss the openings, which were the door openings and the window openings, and then identify the style of the opening. So whether it was a segmented arch window, or a flat-top arch window, I had identified the lintel, whether it was stone, or that it was metal. And so visually, I could do that, but to go into the foundation, I did not go into, I just relied, most of these business owners know what's going underneath the building, and they've been down there reluctantly, and they don't often visit it, but I was able, just by determining the age of the building, to identify the, the foundation type. Notable exterior features, well, the notable exterior, exterior features in some cases have been altered. You have an ordinance trying, that has been established by the city to kind of, to address that. And it, in some cases, they, we were fortunate to have some that have not been changed. The orientation was the, whether it was north, south, east, or west, additions and alterations. Well, that's very interesting, because when you get down to the Mosaic Alley Building, owned by Kubis Furniture, or Kubis Realty, that is, which was the old Amal Dvorak chicken processing operation, it's just, it's a maze. And so they were very cooperative and given me a map of it, and I didn't have, and the measurements, so that became essentially a no-brainer. The old buildings were the storage buildings and so on. And landscape features, I discussed whether it was parking and what side of the building there was parking, and its orientation to Main Street or other landscape features, such as the creek west of town. Comments, I surveyed the building, and that my initials are there, whether the date I did it. NR is whether I recommend it for national register. Not eligible, well, it's by virtue of its age or its architectural significance. Questionable or under, under researched means that, simply that the building could be. So in prefacing this, I did a kind of a historical overview of the community, and from its earliest period of time. And I was able to obtain a photograph just recently from the Sewell Wan family of the first post office, which was a log building next to the creek east of town, which I did not have at the time of the survey. So in this process, people became interested, they opened up their, their personal collections and offered photographs for the Historical Society, which I am a member of, to copy for our collection. And so the rich, the rich photographic history of our community is in our archives at the downtown library, and it is constantly changing, and, and much to our surprise, we, we are always welcoming new things in to the collection. So I did the early agricultural river settlement, its geography, the Native American settlement. We had a very active Native American community here. Where Marquardt Jewelry is presently located, was a log building that, in a general store in the early days, that served the Native Americans in New Prague. So I hope that you enjoy looking through this and sharing. The, the outcome of this survey serves not only appreciating what we have downtown, but also it helps the schoolchildren, and as they do research and community involvement in third grade, as an example, and in high school. Did you have anything else on your PowerPoint that...
Just a couple of examples of the actual survey, so Bros Hotel, for example.
Oh, the Bros Hotel. Whoops. Sorry. I did a history of that hotel for Caroline Amplatz before this project began. So I did that, the hotel, and I did the adjacent building, the Mock Daylight Store, which is the hotel annex, and I did the Klondike around the corner where John Schumacher transformed the old saloon and room, and rooming house or hotel slash hotel for her as well. And it, part of this project was just the discoveries that were made. The first jail was, which was termed the Calaboose, was in the parking lot at the mill, and that it was a Hodak farm. Farms were very close into the perimeter of the town. The Bruszek Farm on the east side, of course, was an established farm, as well as, and the farmhouse was originally, I believe, behind the power plant. And then there was the Novatny Farm, which was where Hartman Well Drilling is. And then another farm down near where the Sewell Printing and Company and Times Office is located. And most people lived along Main Street, they lived above their stores or behind their stores, kept their cows south of town on Fourth and Fifth Avenue South, and, or Street South. And so it was a very tight and closely knit community. It was a community that celebrated, it was a community that intermarried, became very cohesive, due to its religion, due to its ethnic background, to its language, and, but it also had a mentality above just the daily requirements and needs of the community. And they took a lot of pride in this community. And I hope that the city, I've made some recommendations, I'm sure you're inundated with all kinds of recommendations, but I made some recommendations in the back, and I hope you'd look at them and take them seriously, because I don't want to see this town end up like seven miles south of here. And I don't want a Main Street to deteriorate and become a, kind of a passing historic district or business district. I do tours for many groups coming from the Twin Cities, and I take them down Main Street, and I talk about the history, and, and they're, and people are interested in visiting small towns, and in the larger urban areas, they have lost their sense of identity. And we do have an important sense of identity. And it's, it's responsibility that you have, it's a responsibility that I have, it's a responsibility of the chamber, the rotary, everyone, it's a, it's a community that everyone has, has need to be, to be aware of and to be responsible for, as well as the owners of the buildings. I know that's a touchy subject, but the owners of the buildings have a responsibility, but you have the responsibility to make them aware of that. So are there any questions? I've kind of rambled on and on, but you have any questions? I enjoyed the project, and I hope this is a stepping stone and a point of departure for other projects, that the city can involve the Historical Society, as well as myself and the community in developing. Buildings should be identified as walking tours, they should have plaques like many communities have done, such as Northfield and New Ulm, they've identified buildings and their historic use. Yes, when the hotel was running, we would get more outside visitors walking our streets, but I think that time, that time will change. We can be a destination, city again. Any questions?
I think so, I just wanted to point out as well, for those watching at home, as Dennis noted, there is a copy for public viewing at the public library. The Historical Society also has a copy. And then on the city website, if you want to go on the main page, we have a whole section on the left-hand side, go to Historical Documents, and you'll find the whole document in there, as well as the predecessor document, which was the Historic Context Study, also funded by a grant from the Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund from the Historical Society. And I just wanted to, again, note that it was a $10,000 grant, we did not have a local match, and I think we got more than our $10,000 out of Mr. Dvorak here tonight. Great document, in my opinion, and like you said, I've gotten a ton of calls, even I just kind of quietly put the document up on the website, and people have been looking at it.